Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 4th, 2014 city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, bless us all. Give us, give us the ability to understand what's going on tonight. And also, I'd like everyone to remember those that have passed from Avalon scene. Jeannie Hill, Danny Guzman, and Bob Main, longtime friend, a member of Tuna Club, good guy. Also, two individuals that are undergoing treatments. Buddy Wilson Sr. is getting treated for his prostate cancer. And Paci Offield, his doctors found that he needed some additional treatment, so he's probably now up in Oregon getting some treatments. God bless them all. God bless our men and women and the armed services. Amen.
Thank you, Ralph. A roll call Denise?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Morrow?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Announcements, Jen?
No announcements.
Okay, council? Any announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry, the city attorney does have an announcement, though.
Yes, we'd like to add one item that came to our attention this morning. Under Government Code 549, 54.2, the city is going to be purchasing a vehicle to help, the Public Works Department helped with the sewer treatment and upgrades that need to be done. It's a special vehicle, and we were going to do this on the agenda in two weeks from now, but there's only one vehicle left. We've gone out to publicly bid, we've got the bids, there's only one left, and they cannot hold it any longer. So they told us that today. If we do not purchase it today, then we would have to wait eight months to purchase a vehicle. We need a replacement vehicle for the one that we have. This was a budgeted item. And so, we found out this morning that if we don't make a determination tonight on this, that we're not going to be able to purchase this vehicle. We need it. And so, what we're asking is to add it to the agenda, and then you can consider that later. I'm not saying that you're going to purchase it, but to, you have to make a decision tonight on whether you want this particular vehicle. We'll have the staff report at that time. So we're asking your permission to add this. We need, we need four votes.
Can I add one thing, Scott? The vehicle is a City of Avalon vehicle, but it's used at the wastewater treatment plant. It's the one with the crane.
I'll second.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
Any communications?
None, mayor.
All right, before we jump right into the bay water quality presentation, Jen has a presentation, and then the sheriff's department also has a presentation. Announcement? Or a presentation? I'm not sure yet.
Don't encourage her. Announcement.
Announcement. This is a short announcement. Yes, I just wanted to introduce to you the AmeriCorps team that's here currently working on the island, and they're going to talk very briefly about an upcoming opportunity that the community has to participate with AmeriCorps in a service project day, which is in two weekends, and a little bit about their program. A little bit about it.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ryan, and this is Elizabeth, my teammate, and we're members of AmeriCorps, National Civilian Community Corps. NCCC is a team-based national community service organization, and we work with various nonprofit organizations and faith-based organizations, Native American tribal councils, all kinds of different programs, and we work with any kind of response that they need. We work with environmental work, and natural disasters and other things, energy conservation, all kinds of things, you name it. There are five campuses around the entire country that cover 10 states each campus, and we basically cover it all.
The Corps member benefits, and the biggest one definitely is that we get to travel like all over the United States. I'm from the northeast, I'm from New Jersey, and I've never been to the west coast, so getting to be here has been absolutely amazing and really wide-opening to me. Additionally, if you are a college graduate, while you're in AmeriCorps, you do not have to pay the interest on your loans. And after AmeriCorps, we do get a education award that matches the Pell Grant of that year to either pay back college loans or to help pay for college, because our program is for 18 to 24-year-olds. For Community Day, because we love to serve the communities that we are living in, we are planning a day at Tremont Hall on Saturday, February 15th, so it's the day after Valentine's Day, so come spread some love. We're going to be doing like window treatments and some painting and cleaning the debris outside, just to kind of spruce up the building that we know is such a beloved, wonderful place here. And that is again at 9:00 AM on February 15th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, anyone interested in helping for Community Day, they're welcome to sign up ahead of time or get more information at the Recreation Department. They can sign up with me. Or, you don't need to sign up ahead of time, you can just show on up 9 o'clock to noonish at Tremont Hall. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for having me get this opportunity. What I'd like to do is invite everybody, yourselves, the community. Tomorrow night, we're going to have a neighborhood outreach gathering. It's not going to be a meeting, it's nothing formal, it's very informal. I just thought it might be nice to get out to the community. We're going to meet at Pete's Cafe tomorrow night at 5:00. Kind of a social hour, just a chance to share ideas, get to talk a little bit amongst each other. I've invited someone from the island company to come by, and the schools, and the city. Anybody in the community that would like to come by, we'd enjoy getting to talk with you for a few minutes, to share ideas. Also, all of our bilingual deputies will be there, so if you prefer to talk to someone in Spanish, someone can accommodate that. That's all I have. Any questions? Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Presentations.
Yes, mayor, we have first up an Avalon Bay Water Quality Status Report, and with us tonight is Sean Haggerty and Daniel App. Sean from BBK and Daniel from RBF Consultants. So let Jordan get the audiovisual section going here, and we'll start off with Sean.
Great, thank you, mayor, members of the city council. Sean Haggerty from Best Bessin Creek. My specialty is municipal water quality. I've been working with the city for about the last two and a half years to deal with issues related to bay water quality and the treatment plant and various other water quality issues. So tonight, what I'm going to do is speak to you a little bit about the state mandates that you must comply with, that are imposed upon you, to talk to you a little bit about the progress that you've made in terms of compliance with those state mandated requirements. And Daniel's going to talk to you a little bit about something that during a presentation about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, we introduced to you, but it's somewhat new. It's another state requirement. It's called the Phase 2 stormwater permit. It's something that the city is now enrolled in, and it's a program that will have, the city will have to implement over a period of time. So, Daniel will talk to you about some of those requirements. Daniel from RBF is a recognized expert in stormwater. He is very involved with state and regional board issues, very involved in the industry group called CASCA related to stormwater, and so he'll really bring some focus to these issues to you tonight. So, really, what I want to start out with is, I want to cover, although we're talking about state mandated requirements in terms of water quality, I want to just touch on real briefly some of the benefits of working to improve water quality, so that we can kind of frame that issue a little bit. Then I'm going to talk to you about the CDO and TMDL. Daniel will talk to you about the stormwater permit. And the whole idea here is to say, kind of where were we? Where do we stand now? And what are our remaining obligations to make sure we're in compliance with these state requirements? So let me first start with some of the benefits of water quality. And what I did really is just divide this into two slides. One, you know, residents of the city should have a clean bay. And I know as part of your priority setting and policy goals as a city council, you've set a goal that you have excellent bay water quality at all times. And we know, and there's many studies that have been done about impacts of bacteria in water where people are swimming and the health effects associated with that. And there are impacts, monetary impacts, there's medical costs associated with it, there's loss of time off work and lost wages. And so, the really important reasons why you have set this goal of excellent bay water quality at all times. Another part of the equation, obviously for this city, the value of tourism is key to the city. And I've listed some of the items in terms of how important tourism is to Avalon. And there have been lots of studies about the relationship between water quality at beaches and economic impacts. And there's a bunch of different ways to look at it, but people have tried to quantify the value of a day at the beach. And the kind of the consensus is that when people come to the beach, they generally spend about $20 to $35 a day. And so, if you're losing people because there are beach closures, or if there are postings or other reasons why people are not coming to the beach, there are studies that show that there is a significant amount of money that will be lost. So Huntington Beach, if you recall, several years ago, had major problems with water quality, and they had their beach closed for up to two months during one summer. And they were losing $20,000 to $30,000 per day because the people were not coming to those beaches. So, a lot of what we're going to be talking about is things that the state has just said you have to do, but there are a lot of reasons to do them and to work on these things, you know, in addition to the compliance aspects. So let's talk about the things that the TMDL, the TMDL is total maximum daily load, and the CDO is a cease and desist order. And as the council is aware, back in April of 2012, the Regional Board issued a cease and desist order and adopted a TMDL for Avalon Bay. And over the years since, really two years since the CDO was adopted, the city has spent a lot of time and money on really sort of the infrastructure, the studies, the operational issues, and those have included things like the major improvements to the collection system that the city has engaged in, videoing the whole system, getting a GIS system in place, working on plant operations, collection system cleaning, doing a capacity analysis. And so, where you sit now, you have a lot more information than you had in the past. You've done a lot of physical improvements, and those are all very important and great. What I want to focus on a little more is some of the aspects of the TMDL and the CDO that we haven't talked about as much, but they're becoming more important. And those are really the discharge limitations that exist in the CDO and the TMDL. And so, right now, our treatment plant, we cannot have any exceedances of the bacteria requirements that come out of our treatment plant. That's currently a requirement of the CDO and the TMDL. Now, we're starting to come up on other milestones, so basically next year, we can't have any discharges from our collection system. Essentially, we have to have a collection system that's tight and doesn't have leaks in it by June of next year. Probably the most important milestone, and the one that we're making progress, but we still have room for improvement, is by 2016, April of 2016, we can't have any dry, summer dry weather exceedances. So basically, no violations during the summer of the bacteria requirements. And then, there are dry, winter dry weather requirements that kick in on November 2016, and then wet weather requirements that kick in on November 2017. So, I'll get into a little more detail as I do the rest of the presentation about these, but these are going to shift as the main focus of what we're working towards in terms of getting ourselves into compliance with the requirements of the TMDL and the CDO. Now, the major document that really governs and maps out how the city is going to comply with these requirements is a compliance plan that was prepared and submitted to the Regional Board in November of 2012. It addresses all of the requirements, so some of the operational things that I mentioned are addressed in there. It documents the improvements and the $6 million that the city was wisely invested into the collection system improvements. As redevelopment was ending, you were able to take advantage of that redevelopment funds to make these important improvements. We have been working hard on the base side and the private lateral program. We are working diligently on monitoring and trying to learn from the things that are working and really kind of focus on those. We have a whole series of best management practices, so you have, you've been working hard on controlling the bird population, which is a very important aspect of the program, and I think was an important part of the improvements that we saw last year. Things like making sure that we're limiting the amount of water that we're washing down that goes into the bay. You have a rack line cleaning program, so the beaches are kept clean, because that's a known source of bacteria, that's a natural source, but it's something that we can control, so we're working on that. You have a very innovative system where you're cleaning the docks off in a way that isn't washing water into the bay. And as Daniel will touch on a little more, you are developing a public education program, and presentations like this are really an important part of that program to educate everyone about these requirements. So those are all important steps. And because you've taken that step, those steps, and you've made the important investments that you've made, it is nice to be able to say that you have made great improvements from where you were. There is more to do, and I'll touch on that. So what I want to try to do now is just kind of walk you through three slides. One saying kind of where you were, and then some slides about where we are now, and then where we need to be in the future. So before the CDO was adopted, we were facing some significant problems. We had six sanitary sewer overflows from our collection system, really basically one significant one a year is what we were seeing. We had done some testing, both in terms of the work that Dr. Grant has done over the years, looking at the groundwater, and then also some more focused testing. And from that testing, we knew that we had problems with our collection system that needed to be improved. You were having regular postings of the beaches and receiving really poor grades on the Heal the Bay report card. You were up to the point where, you know, some years you were having over 100 exceedances during the summer period, which is the focus of the testing. And even as late as 2012, you were still having 61 exceedance days during the summer period. So, the good news is, last year, we, you as a city, you made substantial improvements, and really, I think you started to see the payoff of the investments that you were making in 2012 last year. And you really saw a dramatic improvement in the single-day exceedances at the beaches. So what I have here is a series of slides that comes out of the work that Dr. Grant is just completing in terms of assessing where we are. But you can see here, we've gone from 61 exceedances in 2012 to 15 exceedances in 2013. That's a 75% reduction in the single-day exceedances. We'd really need Dr. Grant to explain this in a little more detail, but the basic message of this is really good news, is it's not just the single-day exceedances, it's the amount of bacteria in the bay is being reduced. The concentrations of bacteria are being reduced in a significantly, statistically significant amount. And that's really important, because the TMDL looks both in terms of the mean bacteria concentrations and also single-day exceedances. And so, you're making improvements on both fronts, and that's really important. Here's a trend line to show you how dramatic the improvements were in 2013. You know, you have really a kind of worsening condition for many years, and then in 2013, a significant drop-off, and that's really, really positive news. Another thing that's really important, and I think really positive, is you're seeing improvements across the board. There are five monitoring stations at Avalon Beach, and as you can see from this slide, you're making improvements at each of the monitoring stations. And some are more dramatic than others, and that's what this slide shows here, but you're making improvements at each location, and that's exactly what we need to see. This slide is a little busy, but what it shows is that the city has been working on these issues for many years, as the council is well aware, and over the years has made very significant investments. And those investments are really important, but what you can see is really the more focused attention that's been paid, the $6 million that you spent in the last few years is really the key investments that have been made and have put you back into a position where you're on a positive trend. So, that is something I think that at the city and the city council should be very proud of. There's room for more work to be done, because we're not necessarily quite there. And I'm going to go back to those requirements, those discharge limitations that I pointed out at the beginning. We're coming up to a point where we're going to start on a regular basis, having to meet certain specific requirements, and they're rigid requirements. So no collection system discharges by next year, no summer dry weather exceedances by 2016, and then the limited amount of winter dry weather exceedances and wet weather exceedances by 2016 and 2017. And to put that in a little bit of perspective, this is not meant to necessarily scare you, but it does show you that we, the city has some additional work to be done. You know, assuming that we don't make any additional improvements and we're at the 15 exceedances a year in 2016, that's going to, could result in a significant amount of monetary fines that the city might face. So, there are different ways to look at fines. The Regional Board and the State Board has some flexibility there, but really it's between $3,000 and $15,000 per day for your exceedances. So if you're having 15 exceedances in the summer, that's anywhere between $45,000 and $255,000 just for the summer exceedances. And so, that is out there. We need to make the additional improvements so that we aren't facing these monetary implications. The other part of the CDO and the TMDL that's important to remember is that it's not only about monetary fines, but I mean ultimately, if the city can't continue to make improvements and get into a position of compliance, there are some hammers that the regulators have where they can come in and say, listen, you just, clearly you can't, you can't operate this system correctly. We're going to come in and take it over. That's rare, but it does, it does happen, and it's out there. And another one that's more realistic and significant for the city is, they do have the authority to say, listen, if you can't operate your current system, we're not going to let you have any new connections to your system. So essentially, they can place a moratorium on any new growth within the city if there is a failure to meet the requirements. Now, I think given the improvements that have been made and the positive trend that you're showing, you know, those are unlikely, but that's why these improvements need to continue and the efforts need to continue. So, one thing I'd like to say is that a lot of the things that Daniel will talk about, the state mandates that Daniel's going to cover, those are things that are going to stay there. There are, there are going to be things that the city's going to have to comply with as long as there's a Clean Water Act or a state law that governs clean water. There's some hope, and there is somewhat of an end game eventually on the TMDL. You know, if we can show over time that we are not having exceedances, there is a way ultimately to say, listen, we've gotten the bay back to a condition where it's meeting all the objectives that the Regional Board has set for it, it's safe to swim in, all of those things. And so, there is a way eventually, if we keep going and we continue to make these improvements, to try to get the bay off what's called the 303D list, so that the TMDL goes away. Now, that's, that still means you're going to have to make sure that that stays in compliance and that you keep the water clean, but that's the end goal. I mean, that's the hope, and if you continue the efforts and the track that you're on, you know, this could be a very, very positive story in terms of taking something that, you know, several years ago, you know, was the beach bummer, was, you know, had those grades, and really turning it around and becoming, you know, something that on a regular basis you're getting the highest marks for water quality. And so, at least in, from my perspective, that's your end goal. And I do think with the improvements that you've made and the things that you've been doing, that's a realistic opportunity. You just need to continue the effort. So, I think with that, what we're going to do now is transition a little bit away from more of a focus on the beach and the dry weather activities, and turn it over to Daniel to talk about some of the stormwater requirements that are going to now be in place.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor, city councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I'm Daniel App with RBF Consulting, and I'm going to present on the stormwater permit and the city's plan for implementation of that permit. So, the city was designated by the state, the State Water Resources Control Board, to be an enrollee in what's known as the Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit, otherwise known as the Phase 2 Permit. That permit was adopted in February of last year, and so this is a mandate from the state. This is something that the city will have to require, to comply with. And the basic requirements include submitting what's called a notice of intent to the State Board, developing a stormwater program to implement all the elements of the permit itself, and then track those implementation actions on an annual basis and submit an annual report. So the city has enrolled. The city submitted a notice of intent on July 1st of last year, and so the city is currently enrolled in the project, in the permit. So, I'm going to talk about the Water Quality Management Plan. So that is an element of the CDO and the TMDL. It was a requirement in that plan, and so that has been developed. And what that, what the Water Quality Management Plan is designed to do is, it's the city's way to implement, and it is the compliance and guidance document for the city's stormwater program. So you can see it has a variety of different components. All these components kind of stretch across all the different municipal activities that go on in the city, as well as some private activities that go on in the city's jurisdiction. So the first element is program management. It identifies essentially the extent of the permit coverage. It identifies the permit boundary, which is essentially the municipal boundary. It also includes the guidance document, which identifies the city departments and who's responsible for implementing different elements of the permit, and gives a timeframe for implementation. It also provides and identifies the legal authority of the city to implement the permit, and this is really through the Water Quality Ordinance, which was adopted in July of last year. There's also a step called certification, which requires maintaining that legal authority while the city is a permatee under this permit, as well as enforcement measures in case there are things that the city needs to enforce against private parties throughout the city to make sure that they're implementing their parts of the permit, as well as tracking all the, all the implementation actions that are going on. A major component of stormwater management is education and outreach. So there's really two components to this. There's public education and outreach, and this is really so that the city residents understand what the stormwater program is and what the city and all the, all the good things the city is doing to. the city is doing to implement that program. And then the other component is staff and site operator training. And so the idea here is that municipal staff, as well as site operators, will need to come up to speed with all of these requirements and make sure that they're implementing them as you go through, or as the city staff go through their normal, normal day-to-day activities. There are specific requirements on specific training elements. And tonight, just the presentation that we're giving now is training essentially you, the elected officials, on what the stormwater program is. There's another element called public involvement and participation. So this is a little bit different than public outreach, and the idea here is that for stormwater management, it really is a community that makes it work. There are elements that the city can do, but there's also elements that residents can do themselves to improve the quality of stormwater. And so this includes developing a strategy that includes all the responsibilities. It could also include the development of a citizens advisory group, if that's something that the city wants to support. We also want to create opportunities for citizens to actually participate in implementation of the program. So such things as storm drain stenciling, beach cleanups, those kind of things, so that the residents feel that it's their program and they can buy into it as well. We also want to make sure that there's public access to information. So that will include things such as the development of a website and posting different documents developed by the stormwater program so the city has, city residents can access it. There's also an element of watershed planning. That'll come kind of later on, but if that does go forward, we want to make sure that the city's residents and the public has an opportunity to participate in that process. One of the major program elements is called illegal discharge detection and elimination. And you can think of the potential for pollutants to get into the stormwater system itself. An example of this would be connection of a sewer line from a resident, and for some reason, they got, it got connected to the stormwater system instead of the sanitary sewer system. We see this across different municipalities. It's one example. So the idea with this part of the program is to understand and map all of your stormwater outfalls in your storm drain system. That's already been done within the city as part of the CDO and the TMDL. To do an inventory of potential illicit discharges and facilities that might discharge pollutants within the city. Then there would be field sampling to detect if there's any of these type of discharges, and then if there are, follow-up source investigations and corrective actions to make sure that those discharges stay out of the stormwater system. There's also a spill response plan. Part of that's already been developed through the TMDL that will need to be augmented to be updated according to this particular permit. Construction site control. So I mentioned that there are some elements that go into private development. So the idea here is that as construction goes forward, there is the potential for discharge of pollutants, primarily sediment, but there could be other pollutants, all the pollutants associated with construction activities that could be discharged off that site during rain events. And so the idea here is, is that we want to make sure that all of those construction sites, however big or small, are implementing controls to prevent those discharges. So there'll be an inventory of construction sites. I know the city's already started on that. Part of the municipal construction plan review process is as construction plans come in, there'll be an augmentation of the approval procedures to make sure that stormwater is considered and that there are BNP's that we put in place as that construction goes forward. And then there'll be inspections of those construction sites and potential enforcement in moving forward. There's also the element, and this is one of the most significant elements in stormwater management, of post-construction. And what we mean here is as new development and as redevelopment happens within the city jurisdiction, there are permanent measures that need to go into place that stay with that development, and as it rains and there's runoff, that those measures, or what are called best management practices, actually treat the runoff, removing the pollutants, so that when the stormwater gets to the receiving waters to the bay, it's clean. So there's a variety of different best management practices. One of them is called site design measures. That's really designed around how you design your site. So a development will integrate designs such as porous concrete or reducing the amount of impervious surface on a site to reduce the amount of pollutants associated with that development. There are source controls, so for the maintenance activities that go on with new development, they're done in a manner to reduce that level of pollution that gets into the stormwater system. There's also a significant concept known as low-impact development. The idea behind this concept is to try to mimic a site's pre-development hydrology so that in the post-development condition, you have minimized the impact to the maximum extent practicable. Those type of BNP's are what you see kind of on the right-hand side, vegetated controls, such things as bio retention down here, green roofs, bio retention planar boxes, and so forth. So those are actual physical systems where water flows into them. It either gets infiltrated into the ground, or it gets filtered and then flows down to the bay. There's another concept called hydromodification management, and as we get increases of impervious surfaces with development, we're changing that natural hydrologic cycle. And so what can happen is downstream water bodies can receive larger amounts of stormwater, increased velocities of stormwater, and you get this effect of erosion within streambeds. So not as much of an effect for the bay, but definitely for the canyons, and you can even see, you know, some signs of this up in the canyons already. So the idea is as development goes forward, you're compensating and trying to capture more of that stormwater on-site. There's also the concept of stormwater harvest and use, so really looking at stormwater as a resource, being able to capture that water and then reuse it for irrigation on-site or other places within the city. So all of those BNP's that I mentioned as they go in with new development will have to be maintained, and there'll have to be a check from municipal inspectors to make sure they're are being maintained. So there will be a change to the development and to the planning and development review process to make sure that these type of BNP's are integrated into new and redevelopment. The last major item is called pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So this is associated more with the municipal sites within a jurisdiction, so the streets, the facility yards, and so forth. Want to make sure that activities that go on with maintenance activities are preventing as much of the pollution from getting into the system as possible. So there'll be an inventory of those municipal facilities. There'll be an assessment to see what kind of activities are going on at those facilities. And there'll be specific plans called stormwater pollution prevention plans developed for each of those facilities to make sure that we are preventing as much pollution as possible. Then there'll be inspections. There'll be an assessment of the storm drain system, and then operation and maintenance activities associated with it. Water quality monitoring, there is a requirement within the permit. The good thing is that part of the TMDL and CDO, these activities are already ongoing. So it's just a matter of documenting these activities, so both monitoring in the bay as well as discharge from the city's storm drain system will just need to be incorporated into the annual report. To tie all this up, one of the things that is, has become more prevalent in stormwater permits in the last few years is the concept of program effectiveness assessment. The idea with this is that all the program elements that I have gone through before, there's an evaluation on an annual basis to see how those elements are performing, how much pollution are they removing from the system itself? And so you're evaluating them on these different levels. So is it just a matter of, are you just implementing an activity based on the permit requirements? Or it goes all the way up to reducing the amount of pollution and then seeing changes within the receiving water quality? So seeing those changes in the bay based on those elements that you are integrating. Then the concept of adaptive management comes in, where you've looked at all of that, you see what's working and what's not working, and you improve the things that aren't working, and you continue implementing the things that are. So the key issues that I see for implementing the Water Quality Management Plan or for stormwater within the city is, as you can see, there are significant implementation requirements. So there's a lot that needs to be done. The one thing is that there is the benefit that there's a lot that's already going on in the city. There's a lot of maintenance activities and other things that just need to be documented, and those will qualify for meeting some of the requirements within the permit. So it's not a matter of starting from ground zero, but it's a matter of documenting everything that's going on right now and then increasing some of those activities to be in compliance. The element of staff training will be key. A lot of the staff are not as familiar with these new requirements, and so they'll need to be, come up to speed to make sure that as they go through their day-to-day activities, they're implementing these requirements. We want to make sure that we're tracking all the implementation actions. That's critical for stormwater management so that as you submit your annual reports, that the state knows that you are implementing everything that is required. So tracking of information will be critical. There's also the potential for enforcement of activities in the private sector. Public outreach will be key, and then again, adaptive management through the program effectiveness assessment process. So as far as the timeline for implementation, your compliance schedule is really July 2014 to 2018, so you see your first requirement is due by July 1st of this year. The deadlines will vary by program element, and what you're seeing here is an escalating scale of deadlines. So in the first couple of years, you're not seeing as many requirements, but in the last couple of years of the permit in 16, 17, and 18, there is a lot that needs to be done and submitted to the state board. So the things that are due this July, July 1st, 2014, is that spill response plan, which has already been begun. There'll be documentation of the construction sites within the jurisdiction. There'll also be update to the, to the policy and procedures for municipal construction plans. There'll be an analysis needed of the landscape code to make sure that there are no barriers to implementation of low-impact development. The good news on that front is there's a good possibility that there's grant funding to help with that. There'll be ongoing water quality monitoring, and then by July, we'll have to submit an annual report as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Sean.
Thank you. Just in terms of kind of wrap-up comments, I mean, I really think the city should be proud of all the improvements that it saw in 2013 in terms of the bay water quality. To capitalize on the investment that the city's made and the significant monetary investment in infrastructure, these efforts need to continue with a focus really shifting toward, trying to work toward achieving that summer dry weather requirement by April of 2016. That's going to be a key thing that will be a focus of a lot of attention from the regulators. You've made significant progress toward achieving that, but there's still, you know, room to improve and improvements that need to be made. Another part is focusing on implementing the wet weather requirements that Daniel just walked through. And, you know, I think this is at least my second time coming before the city council. I think these kinds of activities are really important in terms of presentation, not only to the council, but to the community, because this is truly a community-wide asset, and it's a community-wide effort that's going to be required to really work to solve the remaining problems. I like the idea of setting the goal of eventually getting off the TMDL list and demonstrating that through all of the investments you've made and the efforts you've taken, you've taken that bay, that's your vital asset, and you've gotten it to the level where it's no longer impaired for bacteria. And then having a stormwater program in place that meets the requirements of the state permit, which you must comply with, is really key. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sean. I've got a few questions, and I want to start by thanking staff and your firm for diligent work in assisting us getting to where we are today. I do want to make a comment that this was well underway long before the CDO became a requirement. So if, at the end of the day, the state agency has the ability to pat themselves on the back, that's fine, but I want to make comment that we were certainly on our way to healing the bay long before they got involved. I do have a couple of questions, though, and fortunately for Daniel, I think they all land on your lap. So I understand our goal and objective here, and I understand the state's goal and objective. But for them to dictate to us that we have no exceedances by June 30th, 2015, I don't believe is a reasonable expectation of theirs. Have we had, and I'll explain why in a minute, do we have enough open dialogue with them to get them to soften on some of this?
We have a lot of open dialogue with them. In terms of softening, I mean, these, fundamentally, the idea of the TMDL and these exceedances, it's driven by federal law and federal requirements. So I'm going to answer your question kind of in two ways. I mean, we have, we've developed, because of the efforts that you talked about that did precede the CDO, the kind of image of the city and the relationship that we have with the regional board and the state board has changed dramatically. So when we go there now, and we were just there at the end of last year to get your treatment plant permit renewed, and it was a very positive experience. I mean, the board members are very aware of Avalon, and they're watching it closely, but they're also aware that you've made a significant investment and you've made a lot of improvements. So can they change the requirements? No. Can they work with us to how they're implemented, and does our relationship with them help to put us in a position where if five years from now, we're still having exceedances, but they know that we're doing all these things that are important and required, is that going to put us in a good, solid position with them? Yes, absolutely. So we can't change the requirements, but our relationship with them will help on implementation.
Because what I'm getting at is that there are, there are some things that are certainly under our control. We have spent a bunch of money and repaired the collection system, and we've done everything that we can possibly do as we proceed into the future. We intend to keep doing that. But there are some things that are completely out of our control. For example, in the last few years, we've had two acts of God that have, you know, dropped rocks from the sky, and they've crushed our collection system. Those exceedances, unfortunately, we can't control. We could have tomorrow a run of squid in the harbor, and the biomass will go through the roof. Now, it's not anything on our collection system, but the biomass will be the biomass, and it's going to indicate that there's a pollutant in the bay. Well, we can't control whether or not the squid spawn in our harbor, whether seals come in to eat them, and that there's, you know, 6 million birds coming in to feed on the squid. Will they be receptive to those changes in the ecosystem where we're not going to be receiving a fine for 63 days of exceedances as a result of that?
Yeah, if we, if we continue to do what we've done, and if the city keeps its commitments that it has kept and make, continue to make the investments that it has made, and we can demonstrate that there are national, natural conditions that are beyond our control, they will work with us.
Okay. I'm loving all the answers so far. There comes the magic one. Have we built a strong enough relationship with them where they are in a level of satisfaction that we can now be their poster child? And if so, do they have any financial resources to help us get to the end game?
I think we're getting closer and closer to being on their poster child for a city that's done all the right things. I think we're not quite there, but we're going to get there if you continue the efforts that you've set. In terms of funding, you know, Daniel mentioned some funding that's available. There is limited funding out there, and the more we do what we're doing, the more that money's going to flow to us.
Man, you're the guy with all the answers.
I will add to what Sean said is, yesterday I met with, we have 10 attorneys, 10 attorneys in Washington DC, and they look for grants. And all they do, I mean, all one of them does is look for grants. And so he's been looking for appropriate grants for Avalon for wastewater, stormwater. And so when we get those opportunities to apply for grants, we do bring those to the city's attention, and we go after them. Most of the money available, though, is through the state project, and it's not a grant, it's a loan. And so, you know, you're borrowing money, you got to pay interest. But where there are grant opportunities, we are constantly looking for them, and we're putting staff, you know, we're providing those materials to get as much money from the state and federal government as possible. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we had Barbara Boxer's people over and toured the city and made them aware of it, and we continue to have relationships with our federal elected officials. It's just that there's not a lot of money out there yet.
He answered all of my questions. Council or the audience, anyone have a question?
Is Heal the Bay still the real strong arm of the... Is, is Heal the Bay still the, the real strong arm of the assembly and the state government?
Heal the Bay has a great deal of influence on these regulatory issues. I would say though, again, with similar to the answer that I gave to the mayor with regard to our relationship with the board, I would say that our relationship with the, with Heal the Bay is improving and, and will continue to prove, improve if we continue down the road that we're on.
I had a lot of dealings with them face-to-face. Hopefully it, it's better.
I, I, you know, you know, I, I, there's a lot to be done. I don't want to leave you with a feeling of being overly optimistic, but the, the efforts that the city's made in the last two years and, and back further clearly, I mean, and that's why I tried to put up that slide with the efforts a long time ago, but just the way the city has reacted to the entire process in the last several years is being noticed by all the stakeholders. And if we continue down that road, we're going to continue to be in a good position. And, and if we do get to a point where, you know, we do everything we can and we still can't meet some of these requirements, people will ultimately understand that as long as they know that the city has done everything that it can do to solve the problem.
Now, are all the, the beachside cities in California required to do what we're doing right here?
To, to-
Or are we, or are we being punished?
We're not, the, all the cities are required to meet certain standards and the standards are generally consistent throughout the beach communities. I, I would say that given the problems that we faced in the last decade, there's more attention focused on us. And so not every city has a, a CDO, not every city is facing the, the specific kind of TMDL requirements that, that we are facing. A lot of cities do have TMDLs that are similar and bacteria is a big issue throughout California, so we're not alone in that regard. But, you know, we, we do have some requirements that are special to us, but we've, we've really kind of stepped up and, and met those requirements and I really think you, the city council has put the city in a good position on these issues.
Pretty funny. They come in and take $11 million away from us and then lay this on us.
That's true. Absolutely. There's a lot of unfunded mandates here. You know, we are involved in some efforts to try to get additional state funding through the unfunded state mandates process. That's in particular on the stormwater side. We have, we're, I'm involved in a case involving all of the San Diego stormwater entities. There's a case in LA that is actually going to go to the state supreme court that we're going to be participating in as well. So we're trying everything we can to deal with funding and funding is a key part to, to, to deal with these mandates. But yeah, it's, it's somewhat ironic.
Thanks. Annie? Come on up to the podium, Annie.
Anne Marshall, 330 Descanto. I just have a question on the implementation and evaluation and maybe it's a Ben question and a Daniel question and the other gentleman. Is this something that is, can be done in-house? Do we develop our own, you know, with all of the things that they're listing, do we develop that ourselves and then do the implementation and then the evaluation in-house or is it something that will have to be done outhouse?
The, the answer is we are all involved in, in this effort in one way, shape, or form. I will tell you that due to the complexity and the seriousness of, of these requirements, that it would be my recommendation that we always have some type of subject matter expert, be it BBK and RBF or, or some other firm with expertise in this area because of the impact of the fines and, and the consequences, especially I think you saw in the presentation, the very real possibility that we could be in a situation where we're not allowed additional connections. And that's huge. So to answer your question, we're all involved in this and that's one of the things that we ultimately want to do with the city staff is have a all-hands meeting where we go through the water quality management plan so that everybody understands just how important and serious it is. The, the harbor is our primary asset. Without it, we, we have nothing. We, we don't have an economy, we don't have a playground. It's, it's, it's everything.
Well, we all understand that for sure. Yes. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I will make a comment in that the league is negotiating that when, if the water bond ever gets on the ballot, that there is funding in the water bond to cover costs of the stormwater plant. So they're lobbying very hard that that be included in the legislation for the water bond and pass a resolution in September to that effect, so.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. You can catch a boat now, huh?
You messed up the bed tax.
Okay, oral communications. Anyone, anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not currently on our agenda? You may come forward.
Thank you.
Consent calendar.
Well, actually, Mayor, before we get there, I would like to bring Pastor Lopez forward because he has a very important announcement with a visual-
Okay.
-that he'd like to share. Thank you, Pastor.
Pastor Lopez, Public Works Director, City of Avalon. It's come to our attention that, well, we're going to talk about dog poop. Here's our new sign. It's come to our attention that there's been a spike in animal waste around town, unfortunately. So we've had these new signs made, we're having them posted, we've already got them up on the parkway on Sumner where there's a lot of waste unfortunately. We're getting them along Casino Way, the back road from Canyon Club over to East Whitley and we have about 25 more signs that we're going to put up. And I'm going to offer a couple to Johnny Manduro from the Island Company so he can get them posted out there at Casino Point. There's a real problem out there. And thank you to the folks that are good pet owners that are picking up their waste and the rest of them that don't pick up after their dogs. We'd like them to get on board or we have a municipal code right here that can be enforced. And also I might add that there is an ordinance where you have to have your doggy bag as well. So everybody get out there and do their part. This all ties into what we just talked about too.
Absolutely. Thank you, Pastor. Thanks for your efforts on that, Pastor. Much appreciated. I think Dennis JH had a brief announcement as well.
Good evening. I just wanted to bring you up to date on the construction on Metropole, the SCE vaults. As you know, we've had some cultural resource issues going on there. Hopefully now that's concluded and construction is scheduled and I wanted the council and the members of the public to know that the outage, that famous outage is scheduled for this Thursday, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. SCE is notifying all businesses and all the public in the areas, they're doing a good outreach and so we appreciate that, but keep in mind this Thursday, 10:00 PM is the way it's scheduled right now until 6:00 AM. Vons and everybody else, the businesses have been notified and if anybody's got any problems, please contact my office and we'll address them right away and Edison's working well with us and so we just wanted you to be aware of what was going on.
Your extension is?
You're welcome.
Dennis? Your extension?
That's why I was-
Contact my office, but send it to Ben.
We all work for Dennis, I guess.
We'll, we'll train.
Thank you, Dennis. Consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, you have four items on your consent calendar this evening. Actions from the January 21st council meeting, expenditures including warrants, $661,000, payroll in the amount of approximately $200,000 for a total of $861,000 approximately. You have the renewal of the Hamilton Co.'s Tideland lease and a resolution delegating authority to the city manager for emergency action up to $50,000 without engaging in public bidding.
Okay, there's four items on the consent calendar. Would any member of the public or council care to pull up item for further discussion?
Yes, sir. I will abstain from item one as I was not here.
And why is that?
I was out of the country. Sorry, Michael.
Okay, Ole's going to abstain from item number one.
Well, let's do item one, number one first then.
Okay. Anyone care to entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve item one.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Call for a vote, please.
Four ayes and one abstention. Councilmember Wilson.
Staff on two to four.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Call for a vote, please.
Let's wait, 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 hang on, sorry.
Well, hang on again.
All ayes. Sorry.
Okay, general business.
Yes, Mayor, the first item under general business is an ordinance amending the municipal code to include a definition of gross receipts. The Avalon municipal code does currently, does not currently include a definition, so the city attorney has offered a revision to do exactly that and he has a brief staff report on this matter.
Yes, again, several sections in the municipal code refer to gross receipts and there's not a definition of gross receipts. At the same time, the city very shortly will be sending out the new leases to those lessees who lease from the city and that lease contains a definition of gross receipts because part, part, part of the rent is, can be based on gross receipts. So we thought it'd be appropriate to match and have a distinct definition of gross receipts. So we've looked at other cities and we've arrived at this definition, which basically is that money that businesses bring in minus the city taxes that they pay, minus city fees that they pay, minus redemption fees that they pay, that's their gross receipts. So that's the purpose of the ordinance and I'd be happy to ask any, answer any questions.
I'm, I can ask them too.
I'm going to give it to you, Ole. You and I have the same concern on this item, so if you can come up with some creative language that Scott can embroil into this couple of dozen pages of documents here. Were you charging this by the page, by the way?
Yes, he is.
This is like a, this is like a three-page ordinance. What are you talking about?
Yeah, right. Unfortunately, there's a little bit of an oversimplification when talks to business Gross receipts for bed tax purposes should, I think, relate to the amount of revenue that the business receives from the rental hotel rooms. Admissions tax should relate to the activity that they're charging admission for, whether it be theater admission, golf course rounds, sightseeing tours, you know, whatever because and when I owned a liquor store many, 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 many years ago, and luckily I didn't lease from the city, but I was paid to place product on my counter by cigarette manufacturers and beer manufacturers and under your definition, I would have to pay you, if I was paying you rent, I'd have to pay you a percentage of that because that was revenue that the business received. And I don't believe that's what the gross receipts is intended to be. I believe the gross receipts is intended to be the revenue from the transit occupancy, the revenue from whatever the admission type thing, the bike rental, the cart rental, the boat rental, whatever. And I think we just need to define it as that because I think, I mean, hotels can receive commissions from people and under your definition, they got to pay, if they were renting from the city, they would have to pay gross receipts tax on that. And I think that's not what the intention is. I think intention is the activity based. Is that clear for you, Bob?
That was, that was perfect. Are you able to kind of frame that without reinventing the wheel?
I'm not going to reinvent the wheel. I'm going to tighten up the ordinance and bring it back to you either next time or, you know, as soon as I can with those specific modifications in there. So yes, I, I think I understand at least direction from two.
I've always hated, hated gross receipts because they could do anything.
Right.
You know, I've been in business for 43 years and when I did pay rent, I, I told the landlord, please don't talk about gross receipts. Let's just have a number, okay? And luckily I was able to do that because gross receipts, there are so many things that, that, that get in there. You know, you've got these tapes and you've got, employees might make a mistake and overring things and you're, you're looking at the receipts and you've got a lot of bookkeeping to do and it goes on and on and on. And then there's, every once in a while, you find somebody that's not quite honest. He will show you receipts from another register, you know, whatever. Anyway, it's a tough one. Good luck.
And, and well, one of the things, again, we already base a lot of taxes and fees on gross receipts. This is just definition. For the leases, if you recall, one of the things that the council did is we're going away from the gross receipts and more toward a fixed rent based upon square footage, so that will be less common in the leases, but there still be, there, there still will be instances where gross receipts will, will be considered as part of a lease.
Considered, just considered?
Well, no, 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 no. In other words, most of the months, it's going to be a flat rent based upon square footage times a price. There are certain months under the, the council direction where it is the greater of the gross receipts or that, that, that calculation.
But that is a small portion of the city's revenues-
Correct.
... attributable to gross receipts, i.e. transit occupancy tax, which you-
So for example, a hotel that sells a package-
Yeah.
-the city's already getting the warfage fee from the Catalina Express for the ferry ride over. We shouldn't include that ferry ride in the gross receipts number. We should just charge the TOT on the room rent.
If you're a hotel selling the package.
I understand that direction.
Cool.
Excellent.
Sorry, we didn't talk earlier.
No prob-
Okay, item six.
Yes, item number six is also a cleanup item, if you will. This is a revision to the solid waste ordinance wherein we are making the, the ordinance consistent, excuse me, the code consistent with the recently executed franchise and lease agreement with CRNR. And the city attorney also has a brief staff report on this item.
Again, the purpose of this ordinance is we have some new terms in our agreement with CRNR that were inconsistent with the municipal code. Also, the municipal code had not been updated for a while, so we have gone ahead and gone through the municipal code to make it consistent with our agreement with CRNR. We have passed the ordinance or had it reviewed by CRNR. We have, we've received no request for modifications to that. This ordinance was drafted at the time that we were negotiating with CRNR, so to the extent that, that's our, this ordinance largely has been paid for by CRNR as part of our contract negotiations with them. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And I have included the council's requirement that we talked about a couple meetings ago about tamper-proof lids. So that is something that I did add pursuant to your direction.
Okay. Right. Anyone in the audience or council care to have any further discussion on item number six?
Has this been negotiated with CRNR? There was, there was something in there about recyclables that people can give them away and, and, but some of these trash companies generate income based on how much they collect.
Again, what, what, what our ordinance says and what our agreement with CRNR says is that people can do their own recycling. So they can, they, they can take it to Catalina Beverage or any other redemption centers. Once it goes into the trash though, it is the property of CRNR and so then they get the recycling, any revenue from that. We have also continued, it was in there before, it is still in there now, we have an anti-scatagging provision that prohibits people from going into the receptacles and pulling out the recycles. We are obviously aware that with our requirement for the tamper-free lids, that if someone is doing that and they leave the lid open, we would not be going after the owner who put their recycles in there and then if someone opened it to, to, to rummage, we're, we're not going to go ahead and hold that owner responsible.
And I noticed that the used wreaths that are used in the frying areas in the restaurants, that, that the owners have a responsibility of, of moving that themselves. Is that what I read?
No, no, no. It was, it was in the past, what the owners had to do was they had to collect it in a 50, I think it was a 50-gallon-
Yeah.
-tub. We've eliminated that requirement and we've, we've, we have that requirement in, again, it's part of the cease and desist order. they had to collect it in a 50, I think it was a 50-gallon
Yeah.
tub. We've eliminated that requirement, and we've, we've, we have that requirement in, again, as part of the cease and desist order. We have a requirement that owners have to have these grease traps for it, and that CRNR, as part of their contract, they come and they clean them out. So again, what the owner has to do is, is they can't put it in the storm drain, I mean, they can't put it in the drain. They have to have a system for collecting it. As, and we're going through these, it's an eventual collection. It's not right away, but we're going through this systematically through, through the city. And then CRNR comes to these businesses and picks it up themselves.
And picks it up?
Yes.
And, and you know it could be recycled into biodiesel.
That's why CRNR
And they're gonna do that?
Likes them. I don't know, I don't know specifically what they're gonna do with, with it, but they want it.
Yeah, yeah.
There is somebody who collects it, though.
Yeah. So they have an incentive to collect this.
There is somebody who doesn't.
Cheryl? I knew something was up. You moved to the front of your seat.
Cheryl Allison, 326B Whitley. This is just a personal comment on, under receptacles, section 6-2.109. I like the looks of the new carts as well. I think they look great. I did not choose to have carts, because I live up 35 stairs. Those carts are, they're heavy or empty. Once you fill them, they're really hard to get down a large set of stairs. They're great if you live on the street level. They're wonderful. But even, I actually help at a small apartment building, and I have to take them down sometimes about eight steps, and it's really, really difficult. So to require those specific receptacles for every household, I do have a concern for that. So maybe there could be
Well, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're the messenger on this. Could CRNR come up with another option of something that would be lightweight, that would close and secure, so that we can avoid the bird issues that we've been addressing?
I would hope so. Certainly ask. I don't know, I haven't, I haven't asked. But I'm sure there's gotta be other alternatives.
Well, the good news is, today I received a lunch invite with David with CRNR tomorrow. So I will make that topic of discussion. And if he's amenable to that, then we can allow that, that document to stay in existence, and he can come up with those carts, or we come back and modify that element.
Or, the option is to adopt the ordinance as is, and then if there's, the city, in a circumstance where it is completely impractical for someone to take one of these receptacles, we would look at that on an enforcement issue.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from the audience on item number six? Anyone care to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce, read by title only, and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon, amending Articles 1 and 2 of Chapter 2 of Title 6 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding solid waste collection. This ordinance updates the city's solid waste regulation, ensures that they are consistent with the recently executed franchise lease agreement with CRNR Incorporated.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
All eyes.
You sound so inspired on that second, Ole.
Forty-page trash ordinance.
Okay, item number seven.
Yes, item number seven is an item that we have put together at your direction, Mayor, wherein we have identified potential cost savings, revenue enhancements, and expense offsets for this fiscal year potentially, and for the following fiscal year. We, as, as an organization, have been very focused on trying to work on our budget deficit, as you know. When the budget was adopted in November, at that time, we had an approximate $1.6 million deficit amount. So we've been looking at various measures on the expense side, on the revenue side, and on the offset side to bring that down. As we've been looking at that, we also are reconciling, and hopefully soon auditing our expenditures, excuse me, our revenues, so that we have a good idea as to where we stand in that department. So what we brought to you is just a very brief preliminary idea of some things that we have identified that we believe we can do. If you look at your staff report for the fiscal year 2013, we have identified approximately $600,000 in savings ideas. I should add that this is a working document. So some of these items, notably the one pertaining to the street sweeper, and the one pertaining to retirements and separations from the city, are works in progress. And based upon variables, they could actually increase or decrease. So we will continue to focus on this effort. At the next meeting in February, we're going to be bringing back the mid-year budget update, and we'll have a better idea at that time about the revenue side. But I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have about any of these suggestions for moving forward.
Any questions from the audience?
Stephen Hayes, Fire Chief for the City of Avalon. Item number seven. The reason I'm up here is, item number seven is in response to the city for proposed changes within the government to take care of a $1.6 million deficit. And I'm gonna talk about that deficit in a few minutes. But first off, some of the proposed changes are more than just preliminary. As one of the positions on the fire department that is currently vacant is not gonna be filled per city management with the current staffing levels that we, that exist. Instead, there's proposed changes on three different staffing levels, all of which, and I applaud you for looking at that, but all of which are either not feasible and/or are a decrease in response to the City of Avalon, which I disagree with. It's a step backwards for the fire department, and it's based on a $1.6 million deficit that I believe is inaccurate. We should be moving forward with the fire department. I've talked about it multiple times, about our response to in-to-out firefighter safety is not being met. We should be looking at that. We have a paramedic contract with Quality Lifeguard Paramedics from LA County. We have an issue with response. On any given day, and most of the community probably does not know about this, they can be out on a response in the water to Long Point, off the east end, which they were today, two miles out, on a flare sighting, sinking boat. This community is left without paramedics for anywhere from five minutes daily to two hours. They're the unit that carries cardiac drugs for this community and life-saving drugs for allergic reactions. The difference in life and death is one to three minutes if they're not administered. And we have a gap, a serious gap, that this community needs to look at seriously and be filling. So I do take a little offense that we'd be moving backwards in a time when I've repeatedly said we should be moving forward. With regards to the budget, and in response to the actions that are proposed to be taken, I did a little research into the budget myself. I was in the city manager's office for four years, working with Charlie Wagner, a highly professional person, and Betty Jo, who's very qualified as well. And we had a balanced budget for four years. Yes, we heard that the books weren't bound. Yes, we didn't have audited stuff. But there's numbers out there, and there's numbers that are good numbers. So I did a little research. I believe, right now, we're currently facing a revenue of $22 million and expenditures of $23.9, which is $1.6 million deficit. We've all heard that big scary number that's out there. And the perception of the people in this community, based on what has been told through meetings, council meetings, and the public, is that, I've asked multiple people, what do you think a $1.6 million deficit means to you? Every one of them has said, it means that if we don't adhere to and figure out how to save $1.6 million, then we're gonna lose services, that we're not gonna be able to pay our bills, and that is just completely untrue. There's a couple of big things that have not been talked about. Let's get to, first of all, let's talk about the, what I believe, the revenues. On the revenue side, we're projected at $22 million. I think it's inaccurate. I'm basing that on numbers that anybody in this community, and any of you council members can go walk into finance and pick up daily. In June to October of 2011, for a four-month period, and the reason I'm doing four months is we currently have four months on the books as of today in 2014, and from last year, 2013, that I can compare them to. In July to October of 2011, we brought in $6,258,000. The following year, we brought in $6,480,000. You would think the trend is moving up. I've lived in this community for a long time. I see the economy improving. I see the changes that are being made. We have island company making great improvements. We have more people coming, more excited. We have another cruise ship that's coming in January. I would predict a little higher revenue. Guess what? I have numbers that, from the first four months of this last year, we are at $7,139,000. That is a 10% increase this year. I would expect that. And what that equivalates to, if you calculate that out the rest of the year, it comes out to a $23,936,000 revenue, not a $22,300 revenue. Now, let's be conservative, I'm not jumping up $2 million, but certainly we could say probably $1 million. Let's say $23 million can come in. I think that's conservative, and I think we're gonna be surprised it's gonna be quite a bit more than that. On the rev, on the expenditure side, there's things noted in this week's council meeting. Reduced expert consultation of legal fees. Administrative cost recovery successor agency. CRNR construction materials. That $500,000, when I was in city management, I knew that was a possibility, that that was not gonna be in this budget. I knew it was a good possibility it wasn't gonna be in. I didn't know for sure, and I think it's a responsible thing to do to bring it up. But I think it was irresponsible to put it in and say that's an expenditure against the revenue that's gonna happen, because it was more likely that they weren't. Guess what? They're all three in there, and they're all three being taken out as a big savings. Guess what? It was already gonna happen anyways. So if you take those, just those certain revenues, I mean, those expenditures, and you put it against your revenue, which is conservative, in my opinion, brings us down to a $272,000 deficit. I've also identified $861,000 worth of projects that are in the budget and light items that I don't believe are gonna be accomplished this year, and nor, some of them weren't ever gonna be accomplished. If you take that out of the budget and things that won't happen this year, that puts us at $588,000 in the black. Big difference. The reason I bring it up, why? Because our department is being looked at to have a decrease in services community because of a number that was pulled out of the sky. And, but not pulled out of the sky, it was with, with research and data was brought to you, but I think it's incorrect. And, and policy and decision-making is gonna be implemented, and in resources and responses, community are gonna be jeopardized because of a number that is not true. Way premature. A few other things. And I hope you all know that, I mean, I respect everybody in the city management, everybody you do. I know everybody does a great job and working hard. But there's just some facts that I'm, you know, my responsibility is this community and the citizens of Avalon, to make sure they're safe, to make sure that they're getting adequate responses. So I, I need to bring these things up. When I was in city management, and I, Phil, and I would ask you council members that were on board, when I was with Charlie and Denise, I think we did a pretty good job. I think we accomplished, we started the cease and desist order. We brought CRNR over. I can go on and on, we did a lot of things, and I think you would agree with that. I think the current city management does a fine job as well. And they have nice quality people that are working for him. When I was in the old administration, we spent $316,000 on city management. To date, we are spending $853,000 on city management. That's $537,000 more on city management. That's a big number. And I'm being cut to ask a firefighter, or being, not cut it, but asked to be reduced, when city management is spending that much more money than when I was in office? I would beg, I would, I would be hard pressed to say that more, better things are going on. I would agree that we were short-staffed at that time. And I would agree that there does need to be an increase in resources in that office. I agree with that. And I know some of the things are temporary, and they will be replaced. But there has been positions added. Added positions for $65,000. Again, when you're telling me that my resources are gonna be cut, I have a hard time dealing with this, and I think that these numbers are pretty staggering. I think that they're pretty compelling. I think they're pretty darn accurate. I'm coming up here and putting myself in line with these, but I went in there, and again, you can go in there and pull the same numbers. Auditing the budget is not gonna change the numbers. One thing I forgot to mention, the big scary $1.6 million number, if we don't bring it down, and I think we brought it down, nobody, and nobody, I think, in the budget process, talked about the $10 million that's sitting in the bank account right now. It's called the city reserve. And Scott Campbell, our city attorney, said to me multiple times, that's a healthy reserve for a city of this size. It's therefore things of this nature that we might have an offset balance. Nobody's talked about it. Everything said if we don't come up with $1.6 million, the city shuts down, we lose services. Guess what? There's $10 more million sitting right there. Not to mention we have $15 million in redevelopment. That's a whole different side of things, but... So my point is, the city is not in a, in a bad place right now. The city has work to do. I think we always should be conscious of the things we do and look at every possible way to cut. I agree with that. But cutting essential services, we should be looking at increasing them for this community, not cutting them. And there's a lot of compelling evidence that I've talked about tonight that leads to that direction. So I could go on about some other stuff, but I don't feel this is the right time. So I would hope that you would consider really looking at changes, I'm looking at improvements, before you make a decision for anybody in the City of Avalon, any employees, any personnel, anything that you're gonna do, that makes sure we have right numbers. And maybe come back in two weeks and, and look at these numbers. And I bet you'll find the same thing. I know we're behind in audits, I get that. An audit's not gonna change what you're gonna find at the end of the day. An audit's gonna change light items, it's gonna shift money around. There's still gonna be $10 million in the bank. It goes up and down. It's gone down to 9.5, it's gone up to 11 million, depending on the time of the year. It's still gonna be in the bank. We projected revenues and expenditures. If we balance them, which I think they're gonna be balanced, that's a wash. And this year, there's $10 million in the bank. It's pretty straight math. We can make it as complex as we wanna make it, or we can go in there, and we have numbers. So I think it's excuses not to say that we don't have numbers that we can make decisions on. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Steve?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
On this list here, what about the dock side? You don't have that listed in there anywhere.
The dock side?
Yeah.
The casino dock.
Casino dock?
Casino dock. Okay, well, there, there, there is a function out there that the city shouldn't be involved in, the gas station, fuel, okay? And we have enough, I, I think, the last time we checked, to get the infrastructure repaired. And then maybe look for somebody to give them a long-term lease and let them take it over?
I can tell you that, yes, we do have some grant monies to assist in repairing the fuel dock. We are in discussions with a private party about possibly entering into some type of partnership to revitalize that.
Good, good. Because that's a draw on the city, too, big time.
Ben, you surprised me a little bit in your preamble to this, that you intended to bring back at the next council meeting and update on the budget. Is that?
Yes.
So we're looking at a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Any other comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Can I just quickly, Denise, am I, am I off on my schedule for our next council agenda? Does that sound accurate?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just making sure I haven't jumped ahead on something.
Ole?
Not disagreeing with what Stephen said, but the audit will tell us, give us the right starting point for this year's budget. There's an assumption. The audit will get, the completed audit for 12/13 will give us a starting point for this year's budget. And if we had confidence in where the starting point, I believe it was mentioned that the confidence level is at 80% when we were talking about the budget. 80% of $22 million or $23 million is a fairly significant amount of money, and might turn out to be just spiffy do. But I'm not sure it is just spiffy do. And until we get that audit done, until we get the beginning balances for the 2013, '14 budget, so we actually know where we're at and see the actual financial statements, yeah, we have a $10 million surplus. If we were to have a $1.6 million deficit, we would eat that surplus up in six years. It doesn't sound like very long, but, I mean, six years is six years. I think that while we wait for the completion of the audit and the update of this year's financial statements, I think we should just have employee hiring freeze until such time as we know where we're at. I don't think we should just willy-nilly go out there and fill positions. I mean, I know that we've done that. I haven't agreed with all the positions we've necessarily filled this past year, but I think going forward, we need to figure out where we're starting from. And we've not gotten that position down yet still. We're close. We're close. We're really close, but we just haven't gotten that. And it's, I guess it's a confidence thing, and I just don't have a whole bunch of confidence in what way the numbers are going to swing.
Because they always go the wrong way.
Come on, bite you in the butt.
Yep, that's right. I agree with that freeze. And then the other thing that a lot of cities are doing, based on the fact that the state of California took away all of our ACIA monies, which the last time I checked, we were using $700,000 a year at the peak of ACIA money for salaries. Is that true, Gina? Oh, is it around 700,000?
600,000.
So we don't have the ACIA money. All the work that we do on potholes and fixing cement here and doing things like that, we used to use ACIA money. We can't do that anymore. We've got to use general fund money. And so if you look at that, you see the lack of all that money that we had backing us up, which wasn't enough to do the big capital improvements, but it was enough to do maintenance day-to-day. When we don't have that, we're going to see a big change. And when, you know, our budget for salaries is about $5 million a year, roughly. And so if you take $700,000 of ACIA money, is it not there anymore? Where's that going to come from? So there's going to be a lot of things that are going to, it's just not as simple as you might think. There's a lot of stuff in there that has to be looked at. And I'm also, at some point, what the city ought to do is take a good, hard look at the salary structures, draw a line, and do like the rest of the cities that have been devastated by those folks up in Sacramento, 430 or 480 cities that were just ripped apart because the state took all their community development money away from them, including us. That's going to be, it puts, put a lot of cities in bankruptcy. We've been fiscally responsible for years here, careful, and not going crazy with big expenditures. But the Avalon Community Development Agency really, really, really killed us when those folks took that money away. So we've got to be real careful right now with what we're doing, and I think that at some point in time, we draw a line and we reuse the wages. We look at the wage structures and probably discount those a little bit. And even the benefits, even like, I mean, what's the number? $28,000 per employee for benefits? It's a lot of money. And so in new hires, not people now, the decisions were made to give everybody that works for the city what they're getting, and we should go along with that, no problem. But from now on, cut, put a line in there and say, okay, now the wages are going to drop this much, the benefits are going to drop this much. And then see the response. You still get a line around the street waiting to take, get a job from the city. So I think that should be considered, too.
I can tell you, council member, that we are looking at a number of different cost-saving measures, including pension and benefit reform. And any of those will, of course, be discussed with the employee association. And I should also add that the fire chief is exercising his First Amendment right this evening, which he certainly is entitled to do.
Oh, yeah, no, that's wonderful.
And I have to also say I'm not in agreement with a number of the statements made.
And then the other thing that the mayor indicated at one time, everything's on the table, including looking at LA County Fire and Avalon Fire merging together for cost savings. So there's another thing in there, too, that should be out there a little ways, anyway. But anyway, that's my opinion.
Okay, so we reviewed this, and you're looking for direction from council.
Looking for discussion. I'm just also trying to follow up on a direction that you provided. Tell us where we're at in trying to identify cost-saving measures. So I'm telling you, here's where we are. These are things that we are working on. Again, we're coming back at the next meeting with some budget information. Some of these items are, it's a multitude of ways to get to where we're trying to go, and some are things that we will achieve over the fiscal year, some are things that we will bargain to achieve, some are things where we would have to enter into a contract. So it's just, I'm just trying to show the multitude of ways we're trying to bring our expenses down, because that's, in addition to trying to make sure that your revenue numbers are good, I believe also that as a city, that's one thing that we need to focus on is our organization. You know, are we doing things as efficiently as we possibly can? And even if we were in a completely flush period in our city history, it would still be something that we should look at.
Well, everything being on the table is the right approach in any institution, particularly when it comes to cost-saving measures. So at this point right now, you've identified roughly $700,000 of immediate adjustments to the one, what's on paper right now is 1.6. And revenue could change that number any further, and we'll know in a couple of weeks.
That's correct.
So at this point, if we, we're not hurting anybody, if for the next two weeks, we do a hiring freeze and not hire any new positions and reassess this, the status of all of this two weeks from now when we review our budget.
Yeah, I believe we could also take the approach, it sounds like the direction is there, if we just wanted to look at a hiring freeze for the remainder of the fiscal year. We could consider, we could consider that as well. There may be, I might need to come back. There's a possibility that there may be an exception to that, but I think that overall that would be something we could do.
Well, I don't know that we're, we're not, you know, urgent in the next two weeks in the need of...
No.
...of anything.
No.
So we can let the finance department correlate their numbers, get them to you to produce a more refined budget, and allow us to make those adjustments at that time.
Yes.
I just want to make one comment, in that I got a lot of grief for pushing the Joe Machado concession stand, in that according to this, there is no addition to the budget's shortfall, and that it is being covered by Paki O'Field and the O'Field Foundation. And I appreciate that happening. But if we had not awarded a contract, there would have been no reason to go and find the funding for it. This started that process, and us being able to get the funding. But I just wanted to point it out that there is no addition to the city's deficit.
In fact, maybe a kudo is in order. Betty Jo recalled the donation of Paki to the field, so this was her brainchild, so Betty Jo? That's off to you on that. Okay, city managers report.
We have item number...
That's right, item number eight. Your infamous slippery truck that you try to kind of like squeeze in the back door here.
I only found out about it like right before the meeting, but...
Don't kill the messenger.
Gina will be presenting this item.
Right, so Gina's...
She threw under the truck.
Gina Schuchard will have a short update on this item, if you don't mind approaching the podium. Thanks.
And if you have any questions about the existing truck, David Clary's in the audience, and he can tell you what the problems are and what its limitations are.
Yes, we placed in the budget, the budget for a F-350 truck. It has a crane, and Dave Clary currently has one. The transmission's been replaced or refurbished. At one particular point, it didn't make it up a hill. What they do is they clean out the collection areas, and once a year, they do it up on the larger hills here, and this truck has a very difficult time getting up there. So we went out to bid, and we found ourselves in a very unique situation. We found ourselves between the 2014 and the 2015 year. The 2014, which there is one left, is $43,372. The other bid we received was on a 2015 for $44,970. I received a phone call today saying the 2014 is waiting for us, and it'll be gone tomorrow if we don't get a PO for that tonight. So that's, I apologize for the emergency, but it's, we'll also, another factor in here, too, we would get that truck in between three and four weeks. The 2015, we wouldn't get till September. And the collection on the hills occurs, or the clean-out on the collection of the hills happens within the next month or so. And another concern, I'll just add on that, are the rains. If there's a rain situation, we have an emergency, the truck won't make it up the hill.
So we get it in three weeks and ship it back in four weeks.
So if we get the truck, it won't rain. So that's the goal.
Okay.
So that's the background. You have any questions?
Sounds like a car salesman phone call.
Well, I've got a, I've got a couple of comments. And this is not a fault of Environ and what's going on there. I don't, I don't like the arrangement. I have a problem with the city owning the rolling stock for another company's needed day-to-day work assets. And the reason I make this statement, the predecessor to Environ Strategies did a terrible job maintaining the cars. They were running them into things. It was truly a train wreck. Could we not make some sort of contractual adjustment with Environ to have eventually these, this rolling stock asset be their acquisition problem, their maintenance problem, their deal of the above? I think it's, I think it's an odd arrangement to have a contractor working for the city of Avalon, and we're providing rolling stock. We ran into the same problem with the landfill over the grinder, where we bought a grinder, and we owned the grinder, and they didn't maintain the grinder. The grinder catches fire, we've got to go off and buy a new grinder. I think that's a recipe for failure when it's drafted that way. Any thoughts from staff as to how we could acquire this vehicle with Environ's participation, and, you know, let's make sure that this happens in short order, but at the end of the day, work out some sort of arrangement with the contractor so that it's their responsibility, their burden?
I think the short answer would be, of course, anything can be looked into. I would be curious as to what, how the contract is structured and when would be the appropriate time, but yeah, absolutely. Environ's been very receptive to work on a number of issues we've brought to their attention. I'm sure we could talk about it. I just don't know the when, but we'll get back to you. But I should also add, in the interim, I think that, that's the truck driver over there. He's a pretty responsible dude.
No, he is. He is. But I think historically, it's been a reoccurring nightmare.
I get what you're saying.
That the city winds up being burdened with, and...
Well, actually, right now, the maintenance is being done by the city garage. They do all the maintenance, so we got in agreement with you guys.
I don't know what transpired before with United Water. I just know that the city's doing that now.
Yeah, we bring it, regular maintenance is done, monthly, quarterly, annual.
And the back truck is ours, but we maintain it. You've got valid points. We just got a new agreement with, yes, finally, after the insurance issue got cleared up. But whatever direction is from council.
We need the truck, right?
Yes.
They have a contract to operate the waste treatment plant. So, I mean, I'm sure they would probably go along with it if we revised their operation contract to let them buy vehicles, but we'd have to pay them so they can buy them, but that part of, part of their contract. If they're just operating the place, is it defined that the city will provide all the trucks and all, everything?
I don't have it right in front of me, but our contract with Environ's is that it is our, it is our wastewater system, and they manage it.
They manage it.
Right.
Which is different than if they buy and, if they purchase equipment to operate our system. Now they're just providing the manpower to operate the system.
Right.
And you're changing horses in midstream, and the horse might drown. But it would be good to talk that through.
But bottom line is, we need to buy the truck. Then I make a motion to approve.
Second. Yeah. I'll for a vote, please.
See, we have four ayes and one no. Mayor Kennedy.
On principle. I know you need the truck, David. And just remember, this was going to be a consent item two weeks from now, because it's in the budget, but again, the guy said, today or never.
And David, just because I live downhill from Bob, don't hold that against me.
Yeah, well, it's a matter for emergencies. That's what mainly the real matter was, because this truck wasn't capable of going up hills. If there was like a spill or something at a high elevation, wouldn't be able to get to it.
And Bob, we live on a hill.
Well, it's good thing it flows downhill.
Is that the truck that's used to take the sludge up to the landfill?
No.
No, that's the, done by the seagull or the Avalon Environmental.
CRNR.
Okay, now to the city managers' report.
No report, Mayor.
Scott?
Just one item. On the next agenda, we had scheduled to do, to have first reading of the plastic ban, plastic bag ordinance. And as we were drafting that, we discovered we had a lot more questions in terms of the specifics. So we're actually going to have a study session rather than just present you with an ordinance, and then we go over it. Let me also say that one of the items that we're also going to be discussing in that is the state of California looks like they're going to be passing a statewide plastic bag ban, which then would supersede municipal efforts. So we're looking at that legislation to see how that would impact any ordinance that you would adopt, and we'll bring that also to you in two weeks from now.
Can I make a comment in regards to that? When I was in Policy Committee in Community Services, one of the lead partners is the Grocers Association. Let me tell you, people, people out there watch our council meetings. He came up to me and said, I see you're looking at a plastic bag ban in Avalon. They would like to work with us. They have no problem with it. They wanted to know if we wanted to put the ban in immediately, or that the state was going to be making an announcement within a few days. Well, that morning was the day the state made the announcement. So they are willing to work with us on doing a plastic bag ban if we want to, either our own or just waiting for the state, so. But people do watch our council meetings. I was blown away that he walked up to me and said that, so.
Great.
Anything, Rich? Michael? Nope, that was it.
Willie?
Yep.
In case you're not aware, vehicle registration is taking place right now, and a new little hitch is that we are checking for sound. And I was successful in getting my golf cart passed, even though it was 17 years old, even though it was close, but our ordinance requires that a written report, statement of the results of the testing, be provided to the vehicle owner and part of the vehicle record. I noticed we have like 1,800 golf carts in town. I noticed that today, we tested 27 of them, and 26 of them passed, so that's about a 4% failure rate. And we're going to be writing a whole bunch of pass reports like we have here, which I understand is called for by the ordinance, section 4-3, 4-4.17413, section B, paragraph 4, statement of results. I would request that at the next meeting, we might amend the statement of results, that the statement of results only be required for a failure of a golf cart to the applicant, and that we institute something like a rubber stamp on the registration that would be evidence to the city that the vehicle passed noise ordinance. And we get new registration every year, so we'd have to pass that every year, but it might cut down on three pieces of paper that we wouldn't have to create. Sir?
I'd be happy to take that into consideration. I would be remiss if I did not first go through it in detail with Dudley and Jordan, who are spearheading the effort. I would want to make sure that I, I'd want to get their input.
They're meeting the word of the ordinance that says we need to provide this report. I'm just not sure that it's been thought through as, do we really need to provide a report of a passage as opposed to a failure? And if you have an old, old golf cart, we were close to failing, and the problem was not the motor, but it was the rear-end gear. And my golf cart is like 17 years old, and I saw the Yamaha guys, Yamaha guys, just bring it down, they can fix it, so there wouldn't be any doubt. Was, no special stuff here, but your rear-end gets old sometimes.
If I could have clarification on the request, if we look at this and determine that this is something that we want to move forward with, as the council knows, ordinarily, you have to do two readings of an ordinance, and then it becomes effective 30 days later. And if we went through that process... And if we went through that process, we'd be through... Largely through the registration process with the elimination. So, would you also be requesting if we decide to go forward with this, an urgency ordinance to make this effective immediately?
Or on the concurrence of the city managers ignoring this particular section of the ordinance?
Understood.
Well, while we're on that topic, Jordan, do you have anything to add regarding the vehicle inspection thing? Want to share with us your successes and whatever you've identified as changes through the process?
And actually, if I could have Dudley come forward, too. I don't know if we can have Jen temporarily watch the...
We're going off the air.
Just don't put the camera on yourself. Please, just keep it on the meeting.
She's gonna get close enough, Jordan. That's all we're gonna see of Jordan, no matter where we go.
Oh, there's my Jordan.
What else do you need? Yeah, so, we had our first day of vehicle noise testing as part of vehicle registration today. We were set up right here, what we're calling on the paperwork, Las Casitas Way. And right in front of the fire station, we worked with the fire station. They're very cooperative to let us set up in the space and accommodate their needs for their vehicles to get through. And we worked with CKV to make sure that safety issues with all the kids and parents coming to pick it up are taken care of. We had the area heavily coned off, so it... And marked off with signs and caution signs to make sure that all safety measures were taken. We had at least two assistants, including myself, in addition to myself, one trying to keep everyone in order as they lined up, myself administering the test, and then one other person to do a radar gun measurement as per the ordinance to make sure that people were kind of... So, we can get a gauge and understand what we're looking at. So, with those three people and that whole setup, it still was a little difficult to administer for... I think we actually finished the day in total with, I think, about 30, but yeah, people. And so, it is a long process. The paperwork definitely is a big part of that, filling out the paperwork and all the different requirements for each page to do it. So, that would be something that would minimize... Take away some time required per test to do it. But in terms of actually how it carried out, I feel like it was pretty successful. Everybody was very understanding and accommodating. Even the person whose vehicle did not pass was very recognizing that his vehicle was loud, and immediately said he'll take it in to do it. We had two other people who didn't have their current registration, but knew that they had louder vehicles and wanted to test them, so we had open time, so we let them go through, and they did not pass. And so, now they're aware, and they're gonna go get their vehicles worked on and see what they can do. But it definitely is a process. It definitely is logistical, resource-intensive, manpower process. And I think we are definitely gonna learn a lot from this year, and implementation for next year, we'll try and, you know, hit target times for when vehicle noise testing takes place, either specific days or prior to vehicle registration. Those things that will work out, that we can only work out after going through the process. So, I feel confident that it's gonna be successful, and it's gonna meet our goals. We have noticed some differences in, you know, the sound levels of specific vehicles. Some are just built inherently louder, and kind of managing that with the code is, you know, something that we're just gonna kind of see how it plays out. But it's definitely a work in progress, and we appreciate everyone's cooperation in the process, and the fact that it does take a little bit more time to process each individual person, but I think we'll be pretty successful.
And those that fail have until, what, September?
September 30th. So, if you do not pass right now, if you come between right now and April 1st, if you do not pass, you have until September 30th to come back with no additional late fees or fines or infractions of any kind. And you can... If you do pass on your follow-up, which you can do as many times as you need, we will issue your city sticker. If you come to us after the vehicle registration period, you still have until September 30th, but you will be paying the late fee per normal. And if you don't pass either way by September 30th, you cannot register that vehicle with the city of Avalon. And then, after September 30th, all vehicles are subject to the vehicle noise ordinance. So, even if you do pass today, you're still subject to the ordinance in the future, and you can be ticketed after September 30th. So, everyone will still be subject to that.
So, did I hear you say that if you didn't pass, and you didn't fix your car by the time the vehicle registration terminates, then after that, you're fined? Is that what you just said?
By September 30th.
But you're gonna be... You won't be fined until after September 30th, right?
That's correct.
If you bring the vehicle in before...
During registration period.
During registration period.
Yes.
On March 31st.
Yes. Basically, the takeaway message is, come during registration and try and register your vehicle, get vehicle noise tested, and you have until September 30th, if you don't pass, to get it fixed. That's the takeaway. There's some other situations that'll come up, if people come in late or after September 30th, but we don't want anybody to be in that scenario. So, just come by, say hi, and be quiet as you go by. It's our new slogan or something like that.
Is there anything left for Dudley to say? I can't imagine anything left, but...
Welcome to my favorite time of the year. Okay? I think Jordan did a great job with this paperwork that we're using for this. And one question that might come up, I could see a scenario where somebody passes, and then another fellow doesn't pass, and he goes, "Hey, well, his car passed, and it sounds louder than my car." Well, at least for this first year, we got some kind of backup. We can say, "Look, this is what the... You both went through the same route. This is what the decibel meter said." It might just protect us in case there's something that goes wrong that way. Just so Ralph, this is what we're gonna be issuing. It's... We're gonna call it the Scarlet Letter.
Yeah.
And they'll have this in their window up until October 1st, if that's what it takes. But we would recommend that if you think you have a problem, come in earlier than that, just so you have more time to fix it. Plus, we'll be doing this on a daily basis up until April 1st. After that, you're gonna have to make special arrangements through probably some type of reservation system. So, it's gonna be much simpler if you get all this done before April 1st.
Yeah, but for those people that have got a budget... Because if I remember right, the one person that we nailed when we started this years ago had to spend, I think, $1,100 to fix his car, his two-cycle, and that was awful.
Well, I'm just on the administrative end here, so that's gonna be something that's gonna come up to the council, I think.
If somebody has a golf cart that doesn't pass, they may have to budget for a while to get enough money to get it fixed by September 30th.
Certainly.
And hopefully, from the time that the... At the time, they have to get it registered, but they can't because it's too loud. They're not gonna be fined or anything there. They're gonna have the Scarlet Letter in their windshield, and they're gonna drive quietly as quietly as they can until they budget enough money to get it fixed, and they won't have to pay any fines, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, and just for the nuts and bolts of it, since we do have some constrictions on manpower and testing abilities and things, there is a time period where we're gonna do it. We only do it Monday through Thursdays from 9:00 to 12:00 and 2:00 to 4:30. So, if you come up at some other different time, we're gonna have the testing station torn down and out of the way, so you can't go through that. If you have a full-size vehicle at this time, and that's all you have, you're welcome to come up and do the full size. We're not testing those right now. Logistics, we couldn't find a good place at this time to do that. So, right now, we're just doing the golf carts. But somewhere down the road, we'll set it up.
Golf carts or autoettes?
Autoettes, also known as golf carts.
Okay.
Okay. So, if they stick to those hours, then we're gonna be looking good. And any other questions?
Thank you, Dudley.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Do you have anything, Ralph?
That's it. No, I'm fine.
Okay. Close session.
We have two closed sessions. One is a conference with real property negotiators. This concerns the course for the Catalina Island Grand Prix for 2013. The island company is on the other side, 'cause that's where the race would occur, if it would occur. We're gonna be discussing price in terms of payment, also conference with legal counsel existing litigation, the Hermosa Hotel versus the city of Avalon.
Okay, we've returned from closed session. Would you care to report back, Scott?
No reportable action.
Okay, anything else to add, guys? Meeting's adjourned.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.